Okay. Before we actually do the pledge, if we could move our members over.
I do not see. Brian Olson. Oh, here he is. Okay. Okay.
Jim, you're not getting our subtle signals, huh?
I got them now. Here I am. You guys can't get rid of me.
Sorry about that.
Hi, Brian and Michelle. How are you? Okay, we're open, right? We're live, Sandy?
Yes, we're live.
All right, terrific. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Out of quick notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on February 2nd, 2022, and the Two River Times on February 3rd, 2022. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notices and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the Board Secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of this meeting. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Waiting for a flag, waiting for a flag. Dave is about to save you, and I won't let him save you, Sandy. I'm optimistic. Just give the ICANN.
Has a flag in their own kitchen.
Flag too.
That's we're good with Dave's flag. We're going with Dave. Ready? I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible.
That was.
Was the blue, blue, was the stars in the right, in the right field?
It was perfect, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Perfect. Sandy owes you one.
I do.
We have a very thin agenda tonight, folks. We have a handful of administrative items. And so what I'll do is I'm going to run through them quickly at the end. I'm going to make a motion to go into closed. We have not yet selected a planner. And I would like to discuss that in closed, and hopefully we can make a decision tonight and then come out of closed and put that decision on the record. First item on the agenda is the Land Use Committee memo. As Sherry and Betsy know, that committee did meet on Monday. We had a very extensive and thoughtful discussion with Nick Fabiano of the Rumsen Construction Department and Nick Porczynski of the Fairhaven Zoning Department. That committee includes several zoning board members and Michael Irene, the attorney for the zoning board. We have some, some going forward work to do in understanding some of the ideas that were shared. We will have a follow-up meeting. And then I anticipate that the subcommittee will be in a position to get back to the planning board. Perhaps as soon as our next meeting, if not our next meeting, almost definitely the meeting after. And the plan would be for the subcommittee to report back to the overall planning board with regard to their analysis and their recommendations for the council based on the request of the land use committee set up by Mayor Helper. Any questions or any comments, Betsy, Sherry, with regard to the subcommittee?
No, I think you captured it perfectly.
Do we need to do a roll call?
Oh, yeah. How about that? Yeah, how about that? Note that Bob's not here for sure. I'm sorry, all out of sorts.
That's okay. Mr. Borderlon?
Here.
Mrs. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. Koch?
Here.
Mr. Newell?
Here.
Mr. Peolo?
Here.
Mr. Rolfe?
Here.
Mr. Nittka?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Ms. D'Angelo?
Here.
Mr. Burkhart? And Mr. Leader?
Here. Thank you. Okay, nobody had any further comments with regard to the, correct? Okay, very good. We're going to, I'm going to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the planner. We'll do that at the end. Next thing on the agenda is the minutes from the March 15th meeting. Fred? You're on mute, but.
Sorry, I'm sorry. A copy of the, the minutes were distributed prior to the meeting. I'd ask if anybody has any comments to put forth. So with, with no comments, I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes from the March 15th, 2022 meeting.
A second.
Mr. Borderlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Sorry, Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nittka?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is email addresses for board members. I know, Sandy, that there was some correspondence between Teresa and I on this subject. Betsy, can you, can you update us? Have any discussion at council level with regard to the request or what might be done about this?
You know what? There has been no discussion. The bottom line is it's, it's about a hundred dollars a person. So, and I, I think the zoning board is also interested in email addresses. And unless we budget for it, we can't do it. And I, I believe I saw an email, maybe it was from Mike Irene, saying that it wasn't a good idea to use Gmail addresses. Is that correct?
Generally, consensus among council, if I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please, Mr. Kovats.
Generally, excuse me. Generally, we try to have you not do that for a variety of reasons. It's not for hiding anything, but it's mostly to protect the individual board member's privacy. Recognize that occasionally we will receive Oprah requests, requests for public records. So that if an individual says, now, I'd like the emails sent on this topic between this date and this date. Usually if we have a regular email address centrally located within the municipality, we can garner and grab those documents and respond to those things without going into your computers or your individual email. It allows us to do that and respond. Number one, that's an ease of process. Number two, if there becomes a challenge for discovery purposes, say there is some litigation or some issue, attorney is given court order to review things, we might find that we're going to have to go into your individual email accounts. And if you have not set those up separately. I mean, I, I'm scrupulous in doing that even in my own business accounts as to individual files for individual clients. You may find someone is going to be given an opportunity to go through, otherwise might not ever get into their hands. Because that have access to your individual email accounts through your addresses now. Try as you might to limit that discovery of those types of things. Rules of discovery and the rules of relevance in a trial are much different. Discovery, you can ask for a whole bunch of things. I don't really relish the idea of having to contact you and saying, look, I'm going to need be able to go through and confirm that we've gathered these materials so the court is satisfied. As a result of that, what most municipalities, or at least I'm seeing the vast majority of municipalities that I'm involved with, you know, they have an individual mail account where anything that's sent out, we use that account. We don't, I try not to use an individual's personal account for that reason. Even though the community, if there's a, an attorney kind of privileged, they would not receive it. But in the normal course, where I might be acting more in a, not a counseling role, but I'm going to be acting more in a business decision role, even those things could be discovered. So it's really a protection of the individual's privacy. If at the end of the day, you know, an individual server in the, in the municipality can be reviewed, particularly now where people will give you an Oprah request where they say, I want following information using the following key, keywords between the following dates, you push the button, you get it. I don't have to contact the individual request that information from their servers or those types of things, however they're done. So it's, I think it's a good, I think it's a good best practice to get involved in. And it's something that generated a discussion between me, the zoning board, the adjustment council, and then informally asking the boroughs council whether or not this was something that could be set up. That's where we are.
So Doug, I, I think the question was asked, and I think Betsy might have been giving Michael's comments on it as to whether or not we could all set up clean accounts under Gmail. ToddFairhavenPlanningBoard@gmail.com, all with similar addresses because they're free. And just use that as opposed to creating one through the borough website, which it sounds like it costs a hundred dollars per person.
I, I would feel more comfortable in doing that. Again, when we get an Oprah request, if that's the official address that you're going to receive something, you know, Sandy or myself will be reaching out for you to ask you to do those searches with a timely fashion. And as you may or may not know, things as, things for Oprah generally will apply us to give the response within seven days. That can be somewhat disruptive, even if it's your individual account. But it could work. It would certainly protect, would give a greater level of protection to you than having someone go through the individual email accounts that were not set up in that fashion.
All right, Sandy, if you could just put on the zoning board agenda to discuss with Mike Irene, the issue of potentially setting up through Gmail. As I'm understanding what Betsy's saying, even if we decided to spend this money, we couldn't spend this money until January of 2023 anyway. I, I'm not sure I love the idea of spending $2,000 on this. There's virtually no emails for any of either of the boards at this point. It's, it's agendas and application materials. I mean, that's effectively all it is. So anyway, it, it, let, let, let's get that back to Mike Irene, and we can pull it off the agenda here. It's either going to happen or not.
Space, if I understand, if I understand council, we pass to say, every council member currently pays annually a hundred dollars to have a centrally located email address.
Yeah, and we only, we actually, when I was first on council, I just used my own email address. Everybody did. And then probably five years ago, we created a Gmail address that was similar, just like Todd said, ToddPlanningBoard@gmail. I think I was ecochfairhavenborough@gmail. So we all created that. And then we, we finally realized this was silly. So we went under the off, the official Fairhaven Borough email system because we also changed systems at the same time. But depending upon your, your conversation with Mike and the zoning board, I'm happy to ask to put it on the agenda and have the council discuss it in a workshop session.
Now, I will tell you from my experience, I've not had this one up in any other municipality. Most of my, I think, you know, there's a specific address. I mean, it's usually, it's not, it's not dot com, it's a dot org or something like that, or USA. All of my school districts, again, they have a school district account. It's usually tied to the school. It's usually the person's name, and then it's something like the school district. NJUS, you know, whatever. Maybe I'll try to find out how those are done, so the district, maybe we can have a favor for the borough.
Or just wasting our time. I, I mean, I even said to Teresa that one of the board members, and I won't name them, suggested we're getting ripped off. That it just didn't seem reasonable. They were spending a hundred dollars, and she put up a rigorous defense per the normal. So, you know, I don't know. I, I can't.
Again, I'm thinking of ease of purpose. If you have an Oprah request, even with those accounts, Sandy's going to be contacting you and saying, please go through this. And by the way, I have to have a response app in seven days.
Well, regardless, it's, it's already in the hopper now for your personal email, so we'd have to go back through that anyway. But how, how, how often do you get requests for Oprah information from board members?
From board members, rarely, but from regular public members. It depends on how many GATs lies you have.
Well, I want to point out that Susan O'Brien is the only person attending this meeting, and we would not appreciate if Susan submitted an Oprah request only to bother us with trying to filter through our personal emails. You hear me, Susan? It hasn't happened in 15 years on the zoning board. It hasn't happened, but we're due. And we've been asked to do it by our attorneys for years. And, you know, I just would have thought it would have been a lot easier.
Hey, hey, Tom, kind of like Doug said, I mean, my kids and your kids, they have their own email addresses at the schools. I mean, they're not paying a hundred dollars for every kid that they give an email address in the school district.
As do board members.
Right. I mean, it's on, we, we have a website. You know, you could pay for X licenses and have as many emails as you want, more or less.
That is insane that that's the deal that they cut.
I mean, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna do it because if, I'm gonna see if I can find the response from Teresa.
I, I, I would suggest if you went onto any Board of Education site, you wanted to write the membership, Board of Education members name is going to be listed. They're going to have an individual email address that goes to them, but it's going to be centrally located on the district's site server, or however it is. It's usually done with the school, you know, K through 12, and I mean, I'll bet you pulled up.
Still not free. You're still paying per email address. And I think they buy it in bulk. They buy, they have some kind of bulk contract.
Yeah, I've, I've got the back and forth, and I, I can't, I'm not going to read it all, but she's asking, you know, in her final email to me, she says that she supports it. She's sensitive to Oprah as well as the cost. I don't know. Nothing else to talk about, but I still don't want to talk about this anymore. This is just really.
We work with Sandy. We'll try to get some information out of her.
All right. So the only other thing on the agenda is the appointment of the planner. So in relation to that, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session. And before we, we do a quick vote on that, Sandy has emailed everybody my call-in conference code. That came to everybody at 7:41 tonight. So if you open your email address, you'll see that. So.
Sandy, may I ask if you? To me?
Doug, try that again.
I see. I, I don't seem to see it, but I just be asking, make sure Sandy sent it to me.
Are you joining, Doug?
Did you want me to?
Can you? We're not talking about you.
Yeah, the, the borough attorney attends all executive sessions.
Yeah.
If, if, if this is to discuss who your planner is, I don't need to be there. But I, I'm just going to hang up because if we do come back out, I do know we still have resolutions for. Oh, for me. Look at that, a very self-centered reason.
Well, we can do that before we go in. Doug, I think you should join us. We're not making a decision on you. I, I don't know if you'll have anything to say, but we need you to stick around to come back in to open. You know, and put whatever we do on the record anyway, so you might as well hop over.
I've, and, and just to assure you, I did review the minute, the meeting from last time. I, and I can give you assurances that pursuant to the submissions that I made and my office made to you, the only thing that's changed in my contract from last year to this new term is simply the date. Everything else is the same. The rate is the same. Fat rate is the same. There are no other changes to that contract other than us saying the new dates for going forward for 2022.
Fred, you want to address that item before we go into closed? I'm going to withdraw my motion and go into closed. Betsy, but you had your yellow hand up.
I did. I, I should have taken down. I was just going to say, if Doug wasn't coming into executive session, could we talk the last two items? So he, but he's coming into executive session anyway, and we're going to talk about the the borough. Anyway, we're going to talk about the last two set positions. Last two sets on the agenda.
Well, we're not going to take action on the board engineer tonight. And with regard to the board attorney, can you move that?
Sure. So we, we would, we would like to make a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to Covats. I'm sorry, what is the, I can't find the name, the full name of the firm.
Kenny Gross Covats.
Yeah, Gross, yes. We, we would like, we'd like to make a motion authorizing the award of the board attorney to that, to that firm.
Second.
Mr. Borderlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Peolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nittka?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes. And before I make. Thank you, Doug. Before I make my motion to go into closed, I'm going to pull an audible. Anybody want to talk about going live and actually having a real meeting rather than Zoom? Council does it.
Yes.
Yep.
Live sounds good. Definitely. Yep.
I think it's a good idea.
So I have, I have one wrinkle. Until December, I'm working in Chicago. Most weeks, there's some flexibility, but it's hard for me. So I would, I would love it if I could have flexibility until December where I could zoom in, even if the rest of you are in person. I don't know if that's possible or not, but that would be helpful for me.
In those instances, it's my recommendation that we have some type of a policy to put that in place to make sure we have patents on that. Something up between now and then, if the board would like to do that.
I would, I would appreciate that flexibility, too. I know that the council uses that owl technology. I know that was kind of being, you guys were kicking the tires with that, Betsy, so.
But unfortunately, you can't participate as a member of either the council or the board. But what we've done, if a council member could not attend, we, they called in and, and they called in on Teresa's phone, or you could call in on anybody's phone and participate that way, just like Mike is doing right now.
So just audible, but not, you wouldn't see any. You would have to be rely on plans sent to you via paper.
You, you could watch it. It's just nobody would see you. You definitely could watch it while you're talking on the phone.
Oh, I see. All right. So there's a workaround. I, like Brian, I would prefer the flexibility of having the ability to call in. You know, attending in person is, is, is fine on some nights, but there are going to be some nights when, you know, childcare issues or what have you, or travel requires Zoom access.
I, I, I'm totally against this idea. Sorry, love you both. I don't think it's a good idea. I know both sides of the dais. It is, it's something that we've become accustomed to during a time when we've had no choice. I understand the world is changing. I don't know that land use boards are. I've not heard of anybody going hybrid this way. I, I don't know the legalities of it. The applicants expect to be able to come in and make a presentation to a live board. And I, I've not seen anybody do anything different. I'm going to suggest, because there's no urgency to coming back, we have no agenda, that Doug, you look into whether or not it's legal. I don't know that there's any reason to debate it to the extent that it's not legal. Brian, your situation, if you're not here, you're not here. There's nothing you can do. Dave, I understand. Bob's not here. He's got a business dinner. I've been doing these meetings for an awful long time. They're on my calendar. I work around them. I recognize that's not as easy for everybody else as it may be for me. This is a lot more convenient because this is where I am all day. Coming live is actually a lot harder for me because I don't come home for seven o'clock. So we, we can make a decision as a group, and if we decide that we're going to stay virtual, then maybe that's the better solution. I think hybrid presents complications that we're not really thinking about.
So you're saying either all in person or all virtual? Is that what I'm hearing? Not hybrid?
I, I've never heard of, of anything else, Brian. I, I don't know of any other board in New Jersey that's done it where you have board members that are optionally not there live in the meeting. But there is a live meeting with a presentation. You can't, the, the technology, first of all, won't allow you to see the exhibits and the people moving around the room and the presentation in, in the way. Now, when we deal with a Zoom presentation, it's, it's designed for Zoom because they're in front of a camera. But the minute you move it into the room, now, look, I've been very impressed with the owl technology because I, I forget what I did, but I, I, we've used it. How did we use it? The zoning board? Somewhere we did it. It really is impressive. But it's, it's complicated in terms of what the applicants would anticipate having to do by way of presenting to a, a different medium.
I, I believe we used it when we went back temporarily live to allow people who still had concerns about coming to a public meeting.
For the public.
We, yeah, we used it for the, the, for the public to view and to see what they could see using that platform as.
Right.
As Sandy is, as, as you have noted, it doesn't allow.
I operated it.
It does, it does not allow for participation. And if a member from the public saw something, they would be calling in. I think that's how we handle it.
Yeah. Well, look, you know, let's, let's let Doug research the issue and come back to us and let us know what can be done. And, you know, in, in terms of certainly, Brian, your situation, if you're not here, you're not here. So I, I don't know what the solution is to that, if it, if it can't be done. And Dave, your situation, there's no reason you shouldn't be able to follow along with Brian. If we're doing it for Brian to accommodate him, you should be able to take advantage of the same accommodation. I've stated my piece. All right. I'm going to make a motion going to closed. I got a second?
Yes.
And, and before we, before we log off and do the roll call and log off, does everybody see the email? Does anybody need it again? Or Jim, did you get it?
I have the email, but again, I'm on a separate computer than where my email is, so I have to manually enter the code in. So I don't know if I'm going to come in. You guys are going to have to make me part of the panel again.
No, it's not a Zoom. It's just my conference line.
Then I'm, I'm good. I'll just call from my cell phone. That's fine.
Okay. All right, everybody else is good?
Just confirming, this is the, this is the eight, seven, seven number that Todd, that you sent to Sandy with the, with the PIN.
That's right.
And I'm taking role before we sign off, right?
Please do, Sandy. Thank you.
Sandy, Sandy, I think you dropped me off. I didn't get to vote the last two times, so just, I, I'd like to vote to, to hire Doug again. Unless the alternate doesn't get a vote.
I. I'm sorry?
I say, in this instance, we don't have a complement, so the alternate does get a vote.
Okay, so I'm confused because.
Just take the role to get us into executive.
Okay.
Where we are.
All right, Mr. Borderlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Peolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nittka? He's gone.
Yeah, he, he dropped off.
Okay, Ms. D'Angelo? And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
I didn't get.
Mr. Olson, did I miss? Oh, I put him. Okay, sorry.
Okay, everybody. We're going to log off now. We're going to go into closed. And for the benefit of the public, we will be coming back on after this, either with action based on the results of closed session or just to close out the meeting.
We have an estimated time. Mr. Jim?
We don't have a designated time. As soon as we're done, I would guess a half hour to 45 minutes.
Very good.
Okay, thanks all. Please, please log off so there's no chance of cross chatter. Okay, Sandy, roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Borderline?
Here.
Mrs. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. Koch?
Here.
Mr. Newell?
Here.
Mr. Peolo?
Here.
Mr. Rolfe?
Here.
Mr. Nitka, Mr. Olson?
Here.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Uh, here. Uh, okay, um, I would like to make a motion to appoint, uh, CCH. Um, as the twenty twenty-two, uh, uh, planning board, uh, planner, uh, for, uh, the Fairhaven Planning Board.
Second.
Mr. Borderline?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
No.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Peolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Same.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes. Uh, Doug, I would ask you to reach out to Mike Sullivan tomorrow. Um, I, I'm sorry, I need to amend that motion. That motion was to appoint CCH subject to an acceptable contract being presented to the board. Um, and so Doug, I, I would ask that you please, uh, do I, do we need to vote again? Is that, we just amended that way?
Is there any change in any of the votes that made us result of that amendment?
No.
None. I think you're good. And I'll just ask Sandy to give me the contact information for now. When you get a chance tomorrow.
Yeah. Doug, so I would just ask you to reach out to Mike Sullivan, please, and, and advise him, uh, request, uh, the contract. Please let him know that. Um, we are, uh, looking to confirm what he advised us with regard to, uh, fees. Uh, and specifically, uh, with regard to travel, um, as he communicated to the board following his presentation, uh, at the last meeting.
And me, and. Fees for meeting attendance.
Fees, fees for what?
Meeting attendance.
Yeah, yeah, fees for meeting.
Issues that I have, that, okay.
Yeah. And then the other thing, Doug, is I'm gonna ask you to follow up, um, with the appropriate party, and I'm not sure who that is. With regard to Mr. Gardella's appointment.
Uh, I'm gonna respond to the email that we received, uh, I think last.
Yeah, it, I would.
Copy it on that.
Yeah, I would just ask that you please confirm the nature of the initial appointment, um, similar to CCH, that it's subject to having an understanding of regard to that contract. Okay. Um, we dealt with, um, uh, Mr. Kovats's contract. I don't know, was there anything else anybody had? There's nothing further on the agenda. Okay, I, I will quickly open to the public. I see one diehard that's at least left their computer on. Um, a- and I would welcome any public comment at this time. Going twice. All right, with the record reflect, there's no public comment. Um, I have nothing further in closing, other than thanking the board members for their patience and their hard work.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Yep, good night.
All in favor, please?
Aye.
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 All right, everyone, stay safe.
Yep.
Thanks all.